Thank you all again for seeing everyone after the year and our first meeting of the year. Boy, I like these curtains. It's nice. Alrighty, here we go. See the chief is in the house looking all spiffy? Good, good. Okay, uh, can we get the roll call, please?
Trustee Birchey?
Here.
Trustee Covington?
Here.
Trustee Herren?
Here.
Trustee Hill?
Here.
Trustee Montez? Vice President Sierra?
For the last time here.
President Johnson.
I clarified, I'm sorry.
Alrighty.
Guys, that was a bad.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Here, alright. Give a moment of silence, stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um. We're going to go into, um. The next agenda, public hearing to receive, uh. Public comments on this proposal to sell the $5 million general bonds. One moment here, just give me a minute. Uh. We have a gen- we have a, well. It's at the top here, it says, "Public hearing concerning the intent of the board to issue $5 million." Okay, everybody sees that, huh? Well, we're gonna go ahead, the, um. There's the, it's a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposal to sell $5 million in general obligation park bonds for the payment of land condemned or purchased for parks for the buildings, building man- maintaining, improvement and protecting of the same and existing land and facilities of the district and for payment of expenses incident thereto. All persons desiring to be heard will have the opportunity to present written oral testimony at this time. May I have a motion to recess the regular meeting of the board of trustees and convene the public hearing to receive public comment regarding the Park District's intent to sell $5 million in general obligation park bonds?
Second.
Second. Roll, roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the reason for this proposed issuance of the bonds are as follows. Bond sale proceeds to be used with $30,000 for payment of debt service, $1,200,000 for facility improvements, $1,207,000 for equipment, uh, two, two million, four hun- $2,430,000 for park and/or golf course improvements, and $447,000 for other capital projects. Do any, one in the public got any comments? Do any trustees have any additional comments? Has any written testimony been received on the proposed issuance of the bonds? If no one present doesn't want to give oral testimony or make public comments? Okay, all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to the proposed issuance of the bond. May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. I need approval for the minutes of December 11th, record board meeting?
I'll make the motion to do it. Are you gonna make that one little correction that I talked about?
I haven't had the opportunity to today, but I will.
So here's what we're talking about, Mr. President.
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes, but there is one sentence that just stops. And, um, it's in six, third paragraph, six A, first sentence. I think the text makes it clear what it should say. But with the understanding that, 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 that sentence would just be clarified, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have another correction also. And it's on, um, page three, under seven A on the policy revision. In the, on page three, uh, the second paragraph down, it starts with, "Trustee Montez stated this not technically, this is not technically policy." I, I don't believe I said that, I believe Emily said that.
I'll, I'll recheck the audio if that's okay. Um, yeah, absolutely. That's exactly how it was stated.
Uh, I'll accept that change unless you would, do we want to bring it back with those changes to look at?
Uh, if, if you wish, I'm happy to do so at the next meeting.
Well, sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve the minutes with the, with two provisos then. One is that that sentence will be completed pursuant to the discussion that actually takes place in the paragraph, that's in six A. And then in respect to the comment that trustee Montez made, uh, that that will be modified per the review of the minutes, uh, a review of the tape of the meeting. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, staff reports, executive director?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Attached to your agenda, you have our Park District impact reports for December and for 2024 cumulative. I want to thank, um, there's multiple members of our team who feed into this document, so I'm not even gonna try to name them all. Um, Scott Loftus does corral a lot of people to help get this done, so does Matt Freeman. Um, and then Jenny Swanson helps to put it into the format so that it is easy to read. Trustee Sierra asked me today if he could see 21 through 23, and I said, "No, because they don't exist." Uh, so this is the first full year of this. I hope that you find it impactful, for lack of a better word. Uh, we will continue to refine this. I know there are a couple of things we talked about today that we would like to add for 2025 to help us tell our restoration story better, for example, so we'll be, um, excited to share some of those thoughts with you as part of our continued conversation. But it does give a good idea of the size and scope of the many, many things that the Park District does on a daily basis. In addition to that, you have in your space, a new brochure that was developed at the close of the year by our marketing team. Um, this is an overview. People always say, "Well, do you have a brochure that talks about the Park District?" And we kind of laugh, and so it takes a booklet, um, to talk about the different things that we do in an easily accessible way. Um, I hope that you will take some time to read through this, um, but it is something to be very proud of, the many things that are part of this brochure that you all help to support. So I appreciate your, your efforts very, very much. You are a part of this document as much as the rest of us are. Um, I want to congratulate trustee Hill on being recognized as a 40 under 40. Very exciting. We saw that on social media this week. Um, and then I want to thank all of you for your flexibility. This is not a Wednesday that normally you would see us, um, on YouTube or that you would be sitting here. We appreciate that flexibility so that staff and trustees can go to the IPD conference next week in Chicago. We look forward to learning lots of new things and bringing back ideas to share with all of you. Um, lastly, before I answer questions, I want to turn the microphone over to Matt Freeman, who has an introduction to make of a new staff member, team member.
Good evening. Uh, as you all recall, last fall, we, uh, following the deputy director changes, we had some redistribution of duties and some organizational changes to support that, uh, change in, in duties. Um, we had the addition of the supervisor of park maintenance position, so I'd like to introduce to you tonight Ryan Schaefer and bring Ryan to the podium to introduce himself to you all.
Hello, uh, as Matt said, I'm Ryan Schaefer. I will be directly overseeing our small park through Brandon Park, Lakeview Park, Detweiler Park, which one I missed, Grand View, Grand View. Uh, me and Cuban kind of joke that we're still figuring out who's handling what, but I will, I will directly oversee those five crews. Um, I actually started working for the Park District in 2005. Uh, I started at Madison Golf Course and had different roles. I worked at Madison, I worked for our rec maintenance crew doing ball fields in the summer. Um, I've worked here full-time for the last 12 years as the rec maintenance manager. I've worked at Glen Oak Park, I've worked at Donovan Park, back to rec maintenance, so I've kind of bounced around, but I've worked here in some capacity for 20 years, so, uh, just wanted to say hello. Thanks for the intro. Um, nice to put a, a name to faces, but that's who I am, so, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
He's worked here for 20 years. He must have started when he was like six. Seven, okay, I'll make note. Um, I did, I was remiss in not, I did send an email, and I hope that you all were able to take just a minute and watch the video. Uh, Chanel Hargrave Murray was recognized as a CI hero, and so we're very proud to have her on our team as well. Um, so if you haven't watched the video that's in your email, please do that. Alright, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have if there's something I didn't cover.
Well, there is something you didn't cover.
Oh.
The Park District, um, this impact report, I was really impressed. It really was. I mean, like, 383,000 visitors headed, you know, came to our, one of our facilities. You know, Emily's not saying enough about this. 12,000 program registrations processed, 11,000 memberships, so, 2,000, um, facilities supported, 17,000 passes used, 12,000 interactions throughout the community outreach. You know, 1.4 million solar hours produced, 93 trees, you know, planted. I can go on and on, 5,000, 55, almost 6,000 volunteer hours to our Park District, you know? Those, those are some great numbers, you know? Tickets sold, I can go on and on, and even Owen Center, what, over 200,000 individuals went through that facility last year? 200,000 individuals? The Park District has a very impact, impactful, uh, we are very impactful to this community. I don't know if we really realized that. I'm not trying to shoot our own horn, Emily being humbled by it, but you guys make that happen. You know, you really got, you know, we gotta own up to it now, you know, we gotta know what you're doing here, 'cause you guys are doing some great work out there, and people are not really recognizing, oh, they'll tell us when you do something wrong or something, but, but the peer partners is doing a great, fantastic job in this community. Now, let's give everybody your own selves a round of applause. Alright, just want to let you know, I appreciate, you know, the work. We got employees, board members and, you know, being recognized throughout the community. Oh, come on now, we, we doing it. Alright, okay, let's go.
Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you. Okay, here's another individual that's been doing some great work around here, our superintendent of planning, Becky's in the house.
Our monthly reports before you, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them. As you can tell, we had a very successful year, and there are many projects completed, about two, two pages' worth of projects, so if you guys have any questions about specific ones, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Any questions?
I saw that under completed projects was the Glen Oak train. So could you tell us what the process, sort of, what's the next thing that's gonna happen?
So we received the train, and, um, right now it's stored down at Equipment Service Center. We're in the process of, um, getting the storage unit for over at Glen Oak Park and working on, um, what we're calling the little trolley stops, so there'll be several space throughout the park. So Emily, I'm sure has more to say about in terms of how it's gonna be used over there.
Becky's also working to put the solar power in at Glen Oak, so I, I signed off, that was within my threshold to sign off on the planning for that and the installation, so it will be solar power, um, the battery will be charged with the solar power. Um, Jenny, it's a team effort, right? It took us, what, 20 months, I think, to get the darn thing here. Um, we were able to, uh, after it arrived, we were able to, uh, bring the donor in and take her on a, a train ride through Bradley Park so that she could experience it, because we've been, we promised it's coming next week for like, a year. Um, Jenny and her marketing team will work to help us, like, we, we wrap, you know, we wrap vehicles, we're gonna wrap the train, so it will be messaged with, uh, Park District information. We'll also use the trolley stops to help with wayfinding through the park. We're really excited about that, to help us connect the different spaces and places in Glen Oak Park. Our intent is to publicly, um, celebrate the, the train and its, beginning of its use with Worldwide Day of Play in May, so that gives us some time to work all the kings out and, and get everything ready, but, um, we are very, very excited to have that as a way to help us get people around Glen Oak Park, to increase experience, to use it as part of programming, um, and education opportunities as we think about different kinds of environmental experiences and ed- education opportunities. So at this point, we're just glad to have it here. Um, we'll spend the next couple of months, like I said, getting ready, and then we'll start using it, uh, Worldwide Day of Play. Uh-huh.
Alright.
President Johnson, I do have one, um, question for Becky. So Becky, under the projects under construction, it says Logan exercise equipment? And I was just a bit confused considering the status of Logan. I mean, we don't have any programing outside of Moonlight, so what, what is that?
That was the, the outside exercise equipment that was part of the grant that the city paid for.
Got it.
So we still need to, um, do a concrete access to it, but otherwise it's complete.
Alright, so, okay, so that's part of the city funding. Thank you.
And I had a question too, um, and this is just from my own information. Uh, under projects out to bid, quote, "Riverplex vestibule air curtains," what are those?
That's like when you walk in the vestibule, you have the air that shoots down to keep the, the cold air out and the warm air into the building. To try and help the receptionist area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you. Chief of Police, report, 2024?
Good evening. Uh, in your package, you have the, uh, police activity summary for last month of December of 2024. Be more than happy to take any questions.
Any questions up to chief?
One question that from a prior meeting, I had asked about the closing, like, the Riverplex closing that northern road and.
Correct.
And the timing of that.
Yeah, that, that, I believe, as, as we did a review on that, that was more of a, um, a, a disconnect between, uh, our operations of closing the swing arms and whatnot. It was, you could probably consider it a one-off. It was not intentional.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we have, uh, the number of full-time police officers still now?
We're at three right now with a, uh, a, uh, application or a posting out for fourth.
Oh, we're looking for another?
Yes, sir.
Three, okay, alright.
And, uh, on your crime reports, it, and I don't actually know whether to ask, Matt, are you on this, but Iris Park? I was trying to find the entrance to Iris Park. And I'm not sure where, it, it's off Allen Road, right?
That's correct location. There's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe there to be a formal entrance to the park. The maintained space is at that corner of Allen Road, that intersection right there where we do mow a little bit, and then the rest is unmaintained space as you go down over the hill into that bottom area.
Yeah, it's all wooden, right?
Correct.
Area is all wooden?
Yes, sir.
I've been, I always thought I've been to every park in the Park District. I have never been to Iris Park, so when I saw that, I was gonna figure where would they have damage here. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you chief.
Thanks chief.
Any committee reports?
No.
Okay, new business? Okay, we're going to do the appointment of the 2025 vice president, and that's Ms. Reagan Hill. I propose to be the new vice president. Is there a motion?
President Johnson, I move to approve Reagan as the new VP.
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Yes.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Vice President Sierra?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. Okay, the appointment of 2025 officers and advisors. Is there a motion?
Second.
Good question, if I could. In, in terms of the, I know this doesn't cover committees, but are we just going to continue with the chairs of the committees for the time being, or, I mean?
I will be bringing that back.
Okay.
We also have to discuss, I, I was going to do it under other business, but I was going to address that. Yeah, we're going to bring it back.
Okay, all right.
Just getting, yeah, probably another meeting, but yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, is there, would they add a second? On the appointment of the officer?
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
All right, motion carries. The Historic Reservation and Landmark Act, which is, we don't need no action. Anybody having comments or anything on it? They do this every year, so. Okay, the acceptance of the pro, proposed land donation approval? Need a motion, or anybody familiar with it, you want to talk about it?
Can we talk about it?
Yeah.
Mike Freeberg's coming.
Freeberg is coming, I'm sorry. I didn't have my computer on, going back.
Good evening. This is an offer to donate 2.59 acres of land to the Peoria Park District. This particular parcel lies just off Grandview Drive, just above Herman Engineering on Route 29. In the spring of 2024, we brought this donation request to the planning committee. Upon receiving consensus, we then went forward with the environmental assessment, which came back clean, and there are no causes of concern or need for further assessment. So staff is recommending accepting the donation of 2.59 acres of land adjacent to Grandview Drive Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Acceptance of the city's CB, CDB and G grant funds? If I want to discuss, uh? Do you might want to elaborate on?
Staff recommends approving the agreement between the City of Peoria and the Peoria Park District for the $450,000 for the improvements to Columbia Park. The improvements include playground replacement as well as a new shelter and some sidewalk and minimal other improvements. So this is very similar to, we've worked with the city on Treewind, Logan, Morton Square, so it'd be similar.
Okay.
So the layout, is that just in the current?
That's on our property, correct.
Of the park district, what's the status with the school district property?
So I know Emily and I have talked and I am choosing communication with the city in the park, in the school district to figure out what the options are for that acquisition of that property.
We're waiting to hear from the school district.
So the footprint that's now could change if we got more land, if we got the rest of the land in that park?
Well, the improvements will stay on our property, our existing current parcel. And then the other property, right now we just have a walking path on it. So it's still considered part of our park, but yet it's not officially ours. So these improvements would be just on our actual property that we own.
But it's possible we could own the rest of that land in the park?
Correct, but it's a big open green space, which would be nice just to keep a big open green space.
So there's enough room, because I know back when this discussion started, there was some concern, there wasn't enough room to do everything just in our space.
Yeah, we went out there and we measured and determined the appropriate size of shelter for that area that would fit within our space.
Okay.
When you talk about school district space, you're not talking about the part across the creek. You're talking about all the space just on that one side of the creek?
Just to the north of our parcel, correct.
It's what, Bigelow, from whatever direction it is from Bigelow, right?
Virginia.
Virginia.
Yeah, Virginia.
It, it, back when this conversation started, it was, it's property that Quest owns. And then when Quest was dissolved, then the property reverted back to the school district. And then this past fall, the district was interested in looking at all, lots of different properties that maybe they should dispose of, and, and so this idea was, I guess, pretty much accepted by the school district.
We did have a conference call and they said yes, that they would be transferring all those parcels, but I just don't have, I have, the process hasn't started yet.
And there, there's still a property that's an alley that the city owns?
Correct.
It's a tract, so that would have to come, they'd have to release that too, to make it like all official, probably is part of it.
So, um, I, I just have a clarifying question. At what point in Joyce or Emily are the rest of the board going to be brought up to speed on the, the parcels that this school district are looking to give to folks? Because I know that's a lingering conversation, but I don't know the details and you know.
From my perspective, it would be as soon as we have formal contact with them where they say, hey, you know, is this something you're interested in? We were a part of a call that was simply just a statement from staff that said that they had had a conversation with the board and the board had authorized the process. But I don't have anything specific from them or timeline, and so once we have actual documented requests, then that will come to you.
I will move adoption?
Second. Question, roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, rental rate correction approval, any?
Mr. President, we had a discussion about this during the strategic planning meeting and it appears to be an oversight. We listed the number of $800 for rental for cabin space at Campbell Conda. It's been explained, and explained in the memo that that should have been $1,000. So I think this falls in the category just of an oversight. So I'll make a motion to change, to correct the fee schedule for the notes attached to our agenda materials.
Do a second?
I'll second.
Question?
Well, and the, the amount, the change is having no effect on the budget, right? It's, was calculated, right?
Well, no material impact, that's right.
That is, that is correct. The budget that was presented to you and that you approved was based on the number that you're approving tonight.
Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some calendar consent items that you see from 9A through 9B. Anyone have any particular questions online or?
I have a question on 9D.
9D, okay. Is there another one?
What you need?
Mr. President?
Um, I'm going to need to abstain on 9A, so I guess I'm, I'd like that to be pulled too. That being said, just to move this along, I'll move approval of 9B and 9C.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, on 9A, cannot turn paper products, need approval? 9A.
I did have one question, Matt had. Um, I just had a clarifying question for the company ownership certification. They checked that they were a minority, but they're not a minority. I just wanted to clarify if they're a minority owned company or not.
Which one?
Looks like they checked both boxes.
Yeah, um, no, what, I'm saying anyway, I apologize.
Page seven of the packet, if you have that. Yeah, I'm not, why I'm looking at you. Carrie, do you know, or is Nicole back there?
Correct.
Sorry.
I have to clarify with Nicole, but it looks like they might have tried to white out the yes and put no. I think that's what the scan is.
Okay.
Kind of.
I just wanted to know, so I'll go ahead and move to approve, but if we can just get it like updated so we know for sure for our record. So I move to approve 9A.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Yeah, I'm abstaining, and the reason for this is that I may have stock ownership extremely minor in one of the parent companies of one of the winning bidders and one of the contracts is being discussed under 9A. So I'm going to abstain on everything and not participating in any discussions about this.
Okay.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, 9D?
Yeah, I just had a question. This company is a landscaping, I mean, it's listed as landscaping and has really very few employees and it seems like a big project, so I'm just wondering their capacity and why they?
They've done several jobs for us in the past, and I know they work for the city and do quite a bit of demolition projects, like they demo houses, some of that stuff. So they're, they're capable. I will move adoption.
Second. Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, do you have any pending business?
Mr. President, on 10A, thank you. This, these are the minutes that we've discussed on a number of occasions. In our last meeting, it was tentatively agreed between all of us that we would have, um, we would, we would use a format that did not have verbatim language for the part of the meeting that was at issue and that we would have a verbatim copy of the minutes attached. That was accomplished by our board secretary and was attached to the, as an item on our agenda tonight, so I'll move approval of the minutes of October to, as shown in the agenda materials.
Do a second?
I'll second.
I do have some comments, because I knew this was going to be a very difficult discussion to summarize. But in, I, I just, some of the wording just sort of troubles me. Let's see what paragraph it is, one, two. The third paragraph that starts with Executive Director Cahill explained, and then three lines down says, she admitted this was her assessment. And I just think that word is very confrontational and it should be stated. The word stated perhaps or something more neutral. So that's one. And throughout this summary, sometimes we say some trustees were part of the discussion, several were part of the discussion, multiple, few. So I just think it, you know, I don't know whether one was meant to be two people or four people or. So if there's a way to just be uniform, rather than, than having those descriptions that way, because that, to me, doesn't, isn't very informative or as informative as I would hope it to be. And then on the, the second to the last paragraph, the last sentence of that, where it was talking about recommending issues, recommends issuing a public statement and refunding the rental fee to the event organizers as a gesture of goodwill. I do not, I think it's, in, in no way, in my view, was it a gesture of goodwill. It was a statement of, we didn't want to be taking money from a partisan organization. But when, when those, the, reads the, the full transcript. So I think that's basically the corrections I would like to offer.
If I may time in, um, I think that, and I'll just speak for myself, these maybe meeting minutes have put us through the wringer. And it's time that we put this behind us. And with that being said, I think that no matter what revisions we ask Alicia to make, we're never going to completely agree, which is why I'm just of the opinion, I would like to move to approve these minutes as they are. And anybody that has any comments, questions, can ask off collectively or individually at a later time as it pertains.
I don't know what that means, what does that mean?
So if there are any future comments or questions as it pertains to these meeting minutes or the meeting content itself, then we can have those discussions at a later date, if, if they ever come up. But the point being for me now is, let's put this behind us, let's bury, or let's, let's move forward as is. And if the concern is, if it comes up later, then we'll deal with that accordingly. So I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes that's provided.
Trustee Birchey did move.
Okay, well, second.
And second, actually.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, well, this is going to, I, I, I don't want to, um, I'm going to move to call a question on these so we can move them forward on the motion on the floor.
You have to vote on the question then?
Yeah. Okay, don't vote on the question. Roll, roll call?
Right.
Aye.
Do we, do we not need a second for the call of the question?
No.
She called the question.
Sorry, thank you.
Just a separate motion.
Fair enough, thank you. Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
No.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, um, Cornstalk Theater Group?
Did we vote on the motion?
Yep, we did.
No.
We voted on the question.
You voted on whether, yes.
Oh, that's right, you are, you are correct, yes.
If he calls the question?
No, that, it's, it's a person.
Yeah, go ahead.
My understanding was Trustee Birchey's motion to approve those minutes seconded by Trustee Hill was just voted on. Trustee Sierra had asked to call the question.
I thought Robert's rules required that one votes on the question because perhaps, because that ends discussion. And that you need to, as a group, decide to stop discussion. That's the way, I've always operated within Robert's rules, but.
I'm not, I'm, um, in your, I, I thought we were just going to approve the, the motion.
I don't care what. I don't care what we do, frankly. What, you know, if, if it's any important, let's just vote again on the next thing. I mean, you know, I, I'm happy to vote on the main motion.
What's your, what's your thoughts on that?
The, the board can do whatever they'd like. I think it's, that term has been used in the past in, in meetings that I've been a part of. I, I think that's been the mechanism to move the conversation forward and call questions on the pending motion.
That's fine, that's fine.
Roberts rules can be interpreted in, in different ways and it's a long book, but whatever you guys like to do.
What Robert says goes.
Okay, do we want to vote again?
Well, I thought, I thought I was voting on the question also.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you have to vote.
You thought, okay, okay, let's go ahead now. We got a, a motion here again on?
This is to vote on the minutes.
Yes.
Here we go.
Aye.
Wait a minute. Thank you, yes, I just want to make sure. So trustee Birchey made the motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd, in which trustee Hill, vice president Hill, second, okay, thank you. Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
No.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, most encouraged. All right, uh, the cornstalk theater agreement?
So this was deferred last week or last meeting after a question, um, from trustees. You'll note that there was a follow-up provided that should answer the question. Sort of a non-answer to the question, but we are asking staff, or we are asking the board to approve the agreement.
Yeah, I, I don't know that really answered the question, but, um, the, the question for those of you who, um, are unfamiliar with this discussion was, do we have a, an aggregate limit? And, um, the answer is that the, the $2 million is for each occurrence, but I take it that, and there was some further discussion, but I take it we don't have a, um, occurrence lim, or excuse me, an aggregate limit on, uh, the policy, which is a good thing for us. So if that's the case, then I certainly have no troubles with this and I'll make a motion to approve.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Birchey?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Herren?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye, most encouraged. Uh, number 11, we have incidents requests to address the board. Anybody online? Nobody wants to talk to the park district? Okay, alrighty. We have some communications that we have to thank you, I see, from the elite group. Other business?
Mr. President, um, as you know, um, as everybody here knows, sadly, um, uh, my friend Lori and I are going off the board here in a couple of months. But one of our replacements, granted that he wins the election, is in the audience tonight and I just wanted to introduce him to the board. It's Mark Slover. Mark, you want to raise your hand back there?
Oh, Mark, Mark Slover, okay.
So appreciate that you're attending the meeting and I just wanted to acknowledge that your presence here. Very good.
I thought she decided she was staying. Until? Okay, alrighty. Other business, I didn't, um, appoint anyone yet on these committees. Tim, that you had brought forward, I haven't had some time, we're going, I wanted to wait till I got the, a vice president order. We will be bringing this back again also then, and then we have to do evaluation also of my, uh, my executive director as well. That has to be done and we're going to be getting back with each of you on how we're going to do that process. So just, I haven't forgotten, that's what the board to be aware of. Which, uh, process that we're going to use as a board. And I'm going to get your input on that, so we'll be probably bringing that up also.
One question for the committee chairs, is it DE, DEIA, finance and golf?
Golf, those three.
Those three, so everything else?
And I'd have a citizen advisory that's coming on to the community. That's, we're going to start that. I don't know, well, yeah, probably a chair, I don't, well, yeah, yeah, we'll be a chair.
But, well, ours are trustee chairs versus.
Yeah, right. Okay, alrighty, we don't have any other, uh, other business?
Yeah, I do actually, two quick comments. I actually found an elite shield with all of y'all's signatures on it. So I will be bringing that to Emily and then she can figure out where that lives, but definitely a beautiful piece of history of the park district, city of Peoria, and I, um, of course, the elite program, so I'll be bringing that. The second item, Emily and I just kind of offline on it very quickly, but the sidewalk efforts at Morton Square Park, uh, if we recall, I had access to, uh, if we were going to try any preservation efforts with the brick sidewalks and Emily just shared that that conversation is to come. So I just wanted to plant that. And then I do have just one quick, uh, conversational item as it pertains to the riverfront management. So as we know, the park district manages the riverfront, the city of Peoria owns, um, the, the property. When did we go into an initial agreement with the city of Peoria to ma, to do the management of operations of the riverfront?
It's been since the eighties, easily, I mean.
That's, yeah, was it the eighties?
1980s.
This is before I got here.
We were doing it when I got here in 83.
Eighty-three?
Currently, what do we charge the city of Peoria for the, um, riverfront management?
I was looking to see if Nick was gonna, um, so the intergovernmental agreements with the city, um, it, they are cost plus 10%.
And what does that equal? What, what, what was the cost last year?
So now I'll look at, all right, let me clarify, which contract are you asking about? Are you just asking about the maintenance component? Are you talking about also the?
The whole shebang.
I can tell you on the maintenance component was $301,259 for 2025.
You said 59,000?
$301,259.
And how does that, would you say that that, on the maintenance side, that's pretty consistent year over year?
Yes, typically, unless there are changes, the city is proposing in the care and service levels, it stays pretty consistent and you would see those increases, um, somewhat within the CPI range or just cost of, uh, uh, goods to maintain public areas.
Okay, and I, for the most part, let's follow up on the financial components to the riverfront management operations. The reason why I asked though, and Carrie and I kind of edged on this conversation, but we at the park district, we provide a variety of service to other folk and I want to make sure that when we are having these service agreements with folks, that we're making sure that we're taking care of ourself as well. And I know oftentimes we enter into these long-term partnerships and cost is a hard conversation to revisit. So I just want to look at the numbers year over year, see where we're tracking, right? Making sure that we're remaining competitive and making sure, most importantly, we're putting back in ourself to ensure that we have the staffing that we need, but also provide quality events in that space as well. Thank you, President Johnson.
All right.
Follow-up question to, to that. The maintenance within the 301,000 does not include when there's an event that requires, you know, cleanup and stuff like that?
To clarify, well, it, it includes the staff that support the clean, the, the cleanup and some setup of those events. So the staff that works on the riverfront park, maintenance crew, provide a level of setup to a degree and certainly, um, uh, the service to clean up and flip the space and have it ready for the next event or just open for public, um, patronage. But they are not directly serving those special events, if that's your question.
Do we, like, say if it took 20 hours to do the follow-up on an event?
On the cleanup?
On the cleanup. Is that charged then to the event?
That's correct.
So it's an, an additional revenue from the 301,000 from the city?
Yes, and, and Nick would have to speak to how that splits out in their budget. So yes, that charges to those specific events, correct.
Yeah, specific event, like setup costs, cleanup costs, tear down costs, those are billed within our specific event budgets, so we factor those in when we're planning those events. Sometimes they, they encompass community partners, sometimes they are rentals that are being passed along to a third party, and sometimes they are just our costs, so we do factor those in. The other part of the agreement that I wanted to reference, there is a separate, like, programming and management agreement, separate from the maintenance agreement. So that's more where our team falls in. And we do receive annually $86,500 via an HRA grant from the city of Peoria, so that comes in quarterly installments. So that is part of our financial benefit, if you will, for managing the riverfront. I don't know when that started. I know it's been here as long as I've been employed here. It's been the same amount, so that, that's probably been going on for close to 20 years, if not, not more. And I believe the original agreement for management of that space with the park district started in either 1996 or 1997. That was when the riverfront was last developed into what it currently is today. It used to be a lot less green space, a lot more parking, a lot more gravel, but I believe that the current agreements that we're working under were 1996 or 1997.
If I may chime back in, Nick, I'm so happy you provided that information because the fact that we've had a 20-year partnership with just programming and management and that price has been steady, but the cost for us to provide those programs and services has spiked exponentially. So that's exactly why I want to have a conversation like this.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think it goes without saying that both the park district and even the city to an extent are subsidizing those activities, which I don't believe was the initial intent, but based on kind of their current landscape and just the reality of the expenses, inflation, uh, as, as you all are aware, events are very costly to put on. Sometimes they do generate revenue. Other events, like some of our cultural festivals, we do those because they serve the community and oftentimes we're the only ones that are willing to produce those events. So there's a number of different factors and I know we had the July 3rd discussion and part of the reason we've done that is because it helps generate revenue for our department, which supports some of those other events that do not.
Absolutely. Some more discussion to be had for sure. Thank you again, President Johnson.
Can I clarify that just? When we charge the city, we charge them our costs, right? Our direct costs and then plus 10%.
On the, on the maintenance side of the house?
Yes.
So?
It's not a static cost, it's been over these.
It is not static, it's based on the services provided. We provide them a projected budget, just as we provide you a projected budget, based on what we think our service levels will be throughout the year. But yes, we charge them our direct cost plus that 10% administrative.
If our costs go up, we pass that on.
That's correct. Now, there is language in the letter of understanding that if those costs were going to be significant, significantly over what was proposed in the budget and approved by the city, that, that those discussions would be had before the end of a fiscal year, so changes could be made if, if needed. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I, it was probably said, I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
Sure, no, it's, it's a good point of clarification and, and to further add, in support of the events that happen there, it, the park district's support of those events for setup, tear down, et cetera, goes well beyond the riverfront park crew. Our supportive services are part of that, uh, setup and, and tear down and just overall service level plan for Nick and his team. So, um, I just want to make sure it was clear, park district's engagement in that process goes well beyond the riverfront park crew.
Okay, thank you. I do want to keep in mind also though, uh, we got almost close to 700 and some thousand dollars from the city with Treewind Park. We just recently got, what, 600 and some thousand dollars from the city, uh, for the CBD grant for Columbia Park. So we got to have about, you know, a medium boundary here. So we want to keep our relationships in order and peacefully as possible, okay? Alrighty, thank you all. Now, that being said, uh, is there a move for a German?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you. Really been a great time seeing each other.